You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, our service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford.
All right. Call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for June 7th, 2023. The order, item one, to consider and if appropriate approve the Board of Selectmen's minutes of May 17th, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move second. Any corrections, edits? Hearing not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item two, to consider and if appropriate appoint the Branford Community Foundation as the Town's representative for the management of the ARPA funding grant application process for nonprofit and charitable organizations and make recommendations to the Board of Finance and RTM for grant awards. We have Liza Petro here, Executive Director for the Branford Community Foundation, to answer any questions that the Board or others may have. As you may know, the Town has allocated approximately less 5% of its ARPA award to go available to charitable organizations and nonprofits in town. That cost about $395,000. You know, the Town doesn't really have the internal capacity or infrastructure to go through a solicitation and grant review and award process, so we turned to a trusted source, the Branford Community Foundation, to kind of lead that effort on behalf of the Town. Just to be clear, they will then make a recommendation to the appropriating bodies, Board of Finance and RTM, and the Town will actually will cut the checks directly to each organization, the eligible organization. The amount of the fee for that undertaking, I believe, is minimum 5%, capped at 9% of the total funds that will be available for a war. This did go before the Board of Finance as well, and the Board of Finance gave their endorsement of this process. Is there any questions?
No, but I have a comment.
Sure.
So I want to thank the Branford Foundation. They've been doing wonderful work, and it's very interesting that on the first page, the last sentence tells us a lot about the needs here in our community. So it says, "Request for competitive grant funds surpassed available funding by more than double." So we need to commend Branford Foundation for coming forward and helping us, helping our Town, helping those most in need, and I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Move second. Any other discussion? Is there anything like that?
This is really too tough.
All right.
I like this meeting a lot better than the Guilford meetings, just as a...
Okay.
This isn't public, right?
Well, we haven't voted yet. No, no, no. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. It's really honored to partner with you.
And, you know, to all the organizations that are, that may be eligible, look out for notice. I know the Branford Community Foundation has already begun some outreach to those organizations, but they'll be having some meetings in the next month. How will we be able to access the grant process, you know, the grant awards? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Item three, to consider and if appropriate approve request from Peter Semino, Director of Counseling Center and Human Services, to waive the bid for the purchase of the 2023 Subaru Solterra and award the contract to Premier Subaru in the amount of $45,000. Peter.
What I did is to look around for the other dealerships that are in the state. It's interesting that there's not many, not many that at least have this particular vehicle. What we're looking for is a Solterra, and it's the premium one, which is, what we like about this is an all-wheel drive. Any other electric cars that we're looking at, not all-wheel drive. So we'd like to have something that's gonna, is what transporting people or ourselves, if you can be able to be used, especially if in inclement weather. So we checked some of the dealerships around. The closest one to us is in Milford, Dan Perkins, and they only have a few of these, and the price is similar to what we got from the Premier Subaru, $45,000. So we checked about four or five of them, and they're all in the same range, if not higher, of the same model. They do have other ones, touring ones, and they're like $48,000. This is a relatively new car, came out last year, and the big thing for us is the all-wheel drive. You know, it's got two motors in there for both of the, you know, both of the drive trains on the, on the car, but the other ones we looked at are front-wheel drive, and I think that's a concern for us, especially if you have to drive people around. So it's a competitive price.
You were also concerned about the size of the car, right? You were looking for a particular size?
Yeah, this is sedan. The other one, the Kia Nero, is a little bit smaller, and I think that'd be more difficult to put people in there. Some people, you know, can't fit, and some people can. So we want something that's gonna be comfortable for not only us that are driving, but the people that we're gonna be transporting.
Yep. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Move second. Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thanks, Pete.
Item four, to consider and if appropriate approve a recommendation from the Solid Waste Management Commission to remove the responsibility to provide single-stream roll-off containers at the transfer station, the responsibility to transport single-stream roll-off containers from the transfer station to Murphy Road Recycling Facility from BRS LLC contract for curbside collection to set commence July 1st, 2023. All right. Paul? Tyler?
Well, thanks for having us. So the request is to modify the value and the nature of the contract that the Board of Selectmen already authorized initiation of. Final negotiation of contract language with BRS LLC indicated their lack of interest in providing roll-off containers at the transfer station for accumulated single-stream recyclable materials that would be collected at the curbside and also delivered by residents, saying directly to the transfer station, as well as transferring, driving, hauling those full roll-off containers from the transfer station to the material recycling facility. We're willing to accept that modification in the contract that had previously been negotiated but not yet signed, and that change has financial implications. Tyler Bound has calculated the value of the annual roll-off container rental and the price for transportation from the transfer station to the recycling facility based on the average number of deliveries that have been made by the Town from the transfer station for the past three years, including a 25% increase in that average quantity based on the projected increase in recycling performance that we anticipate we will have. The final component of the request is rather than deducting the actual monthly value of rental and hauling from the BRS contract based on an unsolicited bid that we received from the recycler to actually provide those services, who is our current provider for those services. We have recommended that a fixed dollar amount, using that projected 25% increase in quantity, be applied to the contract for ease of financial accounting.
Okay.
That was one breath.
It wasn't as easy as the first one tonight, was it?
Were there any questions regarding this?
Are you good with the overall budget that's already been approved by the Town? So, just so everyone knows, I mean, we talked earlier, and I know we're thinking we're doing real good, but...
I think that this is the best deal we can come up with that reflects a reasonable expected increase, and the, if the increase in recycling amount is greater than what we projected, it would simultaneously reduce the amount of solid waste that we're delivering. So there could be some rebalancing of expenses between the two accounts.
Thanks.
Okay.
I'm good.
Make a motion?
Second. I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item five, to consider and if appropriate approve a recommendation from the Solid Waste Management Commission to award the contract for transportation of single-stream recyclable materials from the Branford, from the transfer station to the contracted MRF and rental of recyclable material roll-off containers to All American Waste LLC. All right, so this is just basically those dollars that we removed from one contract, we are...
We put in a new contract because the, the, an offer was made with the recycling processing offer to provide roll-off containers and transportation, but we, we, we did not accept that offer because we didn't think we needed it, because it was included in the BRS scope. It has now come back into play, where we want to accept it, but the contract language has already been written for the primary service, recycling, and it's very specific to recycling. So this would end up being a new contract with a partner company of Murphy Road Recycling, All American Waste, who is our current provider.
Which, you say, both, both companies currently serve Branford.
Yes.
All American currently serves the transportation, Murphy Road currently handles the processing.
Do we have a contract with that?
Yeah. All right. Any further discussion? A motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Move second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you.
Wrapping this up.
Been to a lot of Board of Selectmen meetings recently.
Item six, to consider and if appropriate approve a request from Gary Zalinski, Supervisor, DPW, to waive the requirement for bids as permitted by Section 73-2 and authorize the sale of the 1987 International Cummins Pump Out to Fisher Excavating in the amount of $2,000.
Good evening. That's the best you could get, right, Gary?
Yeah, it was in the auction. There were no takers, so, you know, this is the next option unless we leave it in the yard and let it gather rust.
$2,000 is better than zero.
Right, right, right.
Okay, motion to approve.
Second.
Move second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item seven, to consider and if appropriate accept the donation of parcel of land at 210 Pine Orchard Road. Oh, yeah, little letter in here, Matt, and this did go before the planning and zoning for an 824 referral, which had received a favorable review. This is the property owner, Ms. Ryan, has graciously offered to donate this to the Town. It does a but, the Town owned parcel, Young's Pond parcel, so this will be contiguous with some current open space. Is there any questions regarding this, or...
Well, we're approving it. Do we have to send this to RTM, or...
Yeah, this will go as well for acceptance of Town property.
Okay, so moved?
Second.
Move second. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item eight, to consider and if appropriate approve the following resolution resolved, the Town of Branford may enter into, with and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate. And further resolved, that James B. Cosgrove, as First Selectman of the Town of Branford, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Town of Branford, and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents. All right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye. This is, we do this every year.
This, yes, annual.
Right.
All right. All right, any other business? We don't have any correspondence, right? Any other business? All right, motion to adjourn?
Does that have a microphone?
Oh, he has a hand up.
Okay, yes. Any other business? So, can you come up to the microphone?
You'll have to forgive me, I've never done this before.
Oh, yeah, sure. So, just come in and state your name for the record.
Hello, I am Josh Marshall from 186 Damascus Road. I am starting to look into what it would be, what would be necessary and appropriate for having like a bus seating, a bus, at bus stops throughout the Town. I know that there are some aspects with the straight state roads, there's stuff about local roads, about location, how it's funded by which, whether it's by the state or the city. I know none of this, so I'm trying to find out how I would necessarily proceed.
All right. Yeah, I'd be happy to talk to you more about it and get you some additional information. The, the bus routes that are set by State of Connecticut, Connecticut Transit, they set, that department sets those routes, and it, you know, is, is, I've had meetings and discussions about altering those routes, and it is a, I think, a pretty difficult process to do, but I think you're looking for, it sounds like, an expansion of service? Or is it a change of existing bus lines?
Very literally, just where there's a bus stop, there are very few benches, particularly the areas where I normally drive around, and I'm thinking that those should probably have benches, maybe even just some overhangs to cover from weather.
Oh, so you're talking about the existing bus routes?
Yes.
You're not looking to change? You just want to have appropriate either benches and enclosures?
Yes.
Actually, the State of Connecticut is actually undertaking a project where they're identifying to approve many of the bus stop areas, and just what you're saying, either enclosed shelters or canopies on it. So if you contact my office, we can connect you. I believe the Engineering Department may have a list of the ones that are scheduled. Be happy to get you that information.
Okay.
And if there's something that, more specific, an area that, you know, you're aware of that may not be on that list, I believe they're welcoming, the State of Connecticut is welcoming some input.
Okay.
All right?
Once I know more. Thank you.
Yeah, so feel free to contact, you know, or stop in a Town Hall.
Okay.
I'll get you that information. All right?
Good.
All right. Any other business?
I'm Dan Halli, Registrar of Voters in Branford, soon to be retired from that. The legislature passed early voting, and it's, we had discussions during the budget process that it, once that was passed, that it'd be opening up discussion about adjusting the registrar's salary to compensate them for the, for the extra work that is going to be required. So I'm here just asking about what's the timeline that you expect that to take place in, and what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, so the, the full impact of what's gonna be required to early voting, I think, still needs to be assessed, and, you know, working with the current registrar of voters would be certainly important in terms of truly, you know, measuring that, what we, for time, the impact would be. The other thing is, you know, just to be clear, you know, we have a history, the Town has a history of, although the registrar of voters' salary is set through the budget process for their length of term, approved by the Board of Finance, approved by the RTM, by resolution, I know the registrar, I mean, as you know, but for the benefit of others, the registered voters have been compensated and continue to be compensated for additional time, certification, additional time associated with primaries. So I think, you know, we can also address it as we have in the past.
So, so is this something, timeline, is this something that's taking place in a month? Two months?
And then the, what is the, what is if, you know, the early voting timeline?
The first, the first occurrence of early voting will occur in April in the presidential preference primary.
Right.
And then there will more than likely be a primary in August, because it has been in the past during a presidential election. This is 2024.
Yeah, no, no, the question, I meant, to be clear, so has it been determined for primaries as well as election, in terms of what is required in terms of opening, the length of time, how early that early voting will occur, how many locations need to be opened to accommodate early voting? Has that all been either set by statute or determined through the registrar of voters?
It is, there's some, there's some flexibility with towns of populations over 20,000, which we would qualify. You could have one or two voting places for early voting. Those polling places would have to be determined through the Town, and that's, that's an issue because early voting will take place from 6:00 to 6:00, 6:00 in the morning to 6:00 in the evening, except for two days in which it will go until 8 o'clock. So in order to provide that, that polling place, there would have to be some type of Town building in which to do that, and that might be the old Board of Ed, old post office building, because it's not occupied now as far as I know, but that's, that's a discussion that would be had by you and the registrars and whoever else is, would be involved in that, but that's for two weeks. And then there's contingencies here, because if it, if a primary is, takes place over, if that two-week period's taking place over a religious holiday, which may happen in April, right, I mean, so those type of things are, there's some adjustments in those rules for that. And, you know, without getting into all the details here on that, it's just that, that would be, there would be no early, there'd be no same-day registration for those primaries, but there would be for the presidential election in November, so.
Yeah, so has the registrar of voters started to evaluate in terms of, is it gonna be, because that's a decision by the registrars, right? Correct? And perhaps a legislative body, is it gonna be one location, two locations? Are we going to, you said there's some flexibility between the relief for towns over 20,000, which Branford is. Has there, has this all been, is there a recommendation coming from your office? Have you?
At this point?
Yes.
No.
When that recommendation comes forward, we'll be able to then accurately...
However, at that point, no, at that point then, you're, you're already asking the registrars to do that extra work, and they should be compensated for it. Now, I won't be here, because I, as you know, I'm planning on retiring at the end of this month, however, and as you know, my, my Republican counterpart has not been in the office for the better part of six months, so I don't know who the heck's gonna do it, and that's something that has to be addressed by you and the Republicans and as well as the Democrats, because until you get, until you're able to fill that position, those decisions can't be made. You won't be able to fill those positions, I contend, at the current rate in which you are paying the registrars, because you're gonna ask them to do weeks of more work and not compensate them for it. So someplace along the line, someplace along the line, in order to entice people to work and to make it a viable for, a position for people, you're gonna have to come to some type of conclusion. You're not gonna hire people blindly, telling them, well, maybe you'll make more money and maybe you're not, not in this market, I don't think.
Yeah, so just to be clear, you're, you're asking, you admitted that you haven't done the analysis yet in terms of the time impact to the specific positions of registrar of voters, nor any other position that is under the registrar of voters' purview. You haven't done that analysis yet, is what I just heard, you just haven't?
No, no, I didn't, I didn't say I haven't done, done the analysis. I haven't, I haven't given you a plan, because I, I am not going to do that unilaterally, right? I have, I have a counterpart, and if I haven't seen my counterpart, and I haven't been, I haven't had a chance to talk to him, because he has not been in the office, then it's very difficult to make, to make a decision based on, you know, speculation, right?
All right, but just, you know, Selectmen Dunbar has a question, I'll turn over in a second, but, so, are you asking, you're asking for an increase in salary, correct, for the positions, and then at that time, you'll be able to tell us how much time impact?
And, and benefits. Well, I already told you, it's gonna be two weeks. I, I told you, it's 15 days before, before an election, a primary, and 15 days before a, a general election. So I've said that, and next, next year, there's gonna be at least one primary, and probably two, and a general election. So that's 30, if you just take those three days alone, those three elections alone, that's 45 more days. So, you know, you can, you can extrapolate from that. I haven't figured out how long it's gonna take to figure out what building to have a, you know, to have, what building that we're going to actually have the polling place in, because I can't do that unilaterally, right?
Right, I don't know why you haven't set up a meeting. I don't think we're gonna figure it out here.
No.
Selectmen Dunbar?
I guess I got, there's something that you said that, that concerns me a little bit, well, actually, it concerns me a lot. I understand there's more hours. I agree, everybody gets compensated for it, how they do it, that's, you know, you gotta put a whole thing together, because I get it, from what I've been reading, there's whole kinds of time involved. However, we already have, we're already paying, and you just got done telling us that for six months, someone hasn't done anything. If we pay more money, how do we know anything else is gonna get done? I mean, that's my concern. Paying the money is straight up. You should get paid for what you're doing, more work, whatever, but you throw more money into something that's not being done, I was always brought up, you don't throw good money into bad. So how, how do we remedy that?
Well...
And maybe that's something that can't necessarily be said here.
I can, I can speak for myself.
Yes?
I am, I dutifully sign, show up for work, I do my work, I, I manage the people that are in the office, both Republican and Democratic members of the, of the team. I have done my best to, to further the cause of fair elections in Branford, and I have had numerous people, some who are retired, that ask me where my fellow registrar is, and for whatever reason, he is not here, he's not in the office, and he's not visible. I have no control over that person's ability to be there or not, that he's... He's a Republican representative, and he is elected as a Republican official. Now, if an elected, elected official decides not to do their job, I have no authority to stop him or make him do the job. Now, having said that, I know that he went in and had a hip replacement, and it didn't go well, and he had to have another hip replaced. So he's been laid up. However, I also had a hip replacement, and I was back in, it's one of these things, it's a registrar thing. You, you hurt your hips when you do this thing. And so, and I was back at work. So everybody's medical condition is different.
Right.
But I'm saying, so I don't, I can't, until he comes back into the office, I don't know how I can make decisions unilaterally. But I can tell you, I'm telling you upfront, that these things are going to happen and somebody, and, and you're going to have to have some type of an idea of what you're going to offer the next registrar. And if it's, and if it's the same, the same as what you're offering me, I'm guessing they won't take it, because I can tell you right now, my deputy won't. And I've trained him for three years, he won't take it because he's, you, you won't give him benefits and you won't give him a bump in pay, he won't take it. And I wouldn't blame him, in this market. You know, so in the process, you're going to have to scramble to find somebody who, or find a way in which you can hire another registrar. And I'm telling you this, and you've known this for over a year, that I was retiring at the end of this month. So it's no, it's, it's been no mystery to, to you or to my Democratic colleagues. It's been clear, I've been trying to tell people that you've got to prepare for this, and it seems to me that that preparation is not there, but maybe I'm wrong. Maybe you, maybe you have a better idea, but I think that those, those ducks have to get in the road.
You're, you're elected by the people of Branford.
I am.
As a registrar of voter, you do not report to, you don't report to this board or, or you don't report to the, the office of the first electman. You are a registrar of voters, you have to administer their elections by, you know, federal and state law. And that's the duties that you under, that you took when you was, you know, asked the people for your vote. So the fact, the fact that you're leaving midterm, that's, that's basically your decision. And it's your party's decision that to, to find a replacement. That, you know, so to come here and say that you told us, and this is falling on us. No, you took the responsibility of being a registrar of voter. You're the one who asked for the people's vote for a reelection. And you're the one who's making the decision to leave midterm. That's not our decision. So we will, we will continue to work to have a fair and open election here in the town of Branford. This was not a sing, a unilateral decision in terms of not, you know, providing a full-time salary and benefits and everything for an elected part-time position. This was something that went through the RTM, a 30-member bipartisan committee, body, which, which certainly evaluated and it looked at what the, the town of Branford was in terms of both salary and, important to mention, staffing levels within the registrar of voters, which quite honestly, the staffing levels exceed any town our size.
Not true.
Well, that's, that's not only by what research done by, by not only Republicans, a Democrat representative, as well as some of the, the information that you provided directly. I'm not saying that, you know, the, the responsibility that has fallen on the two registers has not increased over the past, you know, number of years. And as I said at the beginning of this discussion, the town of Branford has compensated, increased compensation beyond what you might see in terms of your salary. We have increased the compensation for, for those other duties. When you go to training, we, you've, you've received now a stipend for that certification. When you go, when there's a primary, you get, you, you put in for time and you get compensated for that time. You know, so, so in terms of the history of additional time, certainly warrants additional compensation. And the town of Branford has been providing that additional compensation. I understand now, the request, and with the discussion had prior to the budget, was that the state legislature was considering early voting. We all discussed, we didn't, we did not know at that time that what the magnitude of the impact would be. Therefore, it was difficult to then set a salary adjustment without knowing that magnitude of the impact. And that's where I said, so they just passed it this session, put some, you know, defined it by state statute. And as you just said, there is some potential relief from that statute for towns over 20,000. But yet, we need to have, what is the impact going to be? And the current registrar of voters, both registrars, have taken on this responsibility. And to sit here and to say, well, we're not going to do anything and tell you what that magnitude is until we, we're not going to pick a location or suggest a voting location until we get more money, is quite honestly, I think, is not fulfilling your duty. That's what you're responsible for, is to identify polling locations and to present those locations and secure those locations for voting. So therefore, that still falls under whether the salary stays the same today or, or it gets increased.
Okay, so.
So I ask, hang on, I ask that you truly go through and come forward with a plan or something. So this could then, as, as voted on budget night by the RTM, that they would reconsider this item when they under, when they had an understanding of the impact. I, I feel that's your responsibility, when I say yours, I mean the registrar of voters' responsibility to then document and clearly communicate that impact to, to the town through the appropriating bodies.
Well.
So that's what I ask of you there.
Okay, so let's respond to some of what you said. It's true, I am, I am a elected official, and I decide whether I'm going to retire or not when I, when I decide. However, my salary is based on what you and the board and the RTM and Finance Department did tie, right? I mean, the Board of Finance. So that salary, I don't have any say in that salary as ultimately.
Well, for the record, I don't think we do.
This is what I'm speaking to you about, right? The salary, I'm not talking about the responsibilities. If you want to talk to responsibilities, I have seen my counterpart in the office one time this year. So I'm saying to you, I can't make those decisions because I don't have a counterpart. I can't legally make a unilateral decision. So either you, either you tell your counterpart to get off his sick leave and come in here and work with me, or he has to work with somebody who is coming onboard who knows when. Because like I'm saying, that's put you, it puts it in a difficult spot, and I'm trying to tell you that now. I can't, I can't make these decisions unilaterally. And if you read the statute, you'll know that. So you can talk to me all you want about my responsibilities, and I can tell you what, what the law says, the new law says. However, I don't know how, how do I decide what polling place to take? What might, what to make for a polling place if I don't, if I don't have my counterpart to talk to, right? I mean, Mr. Law is not here, he's, he's just not, have you seen him recently? Has anybody seen him recently? So it is an issue, right?
So a couple of things with that, and we don't, to continue to debate here, I'm more than happy to, but, I don't know, have you reached out to the, the registrar, the, your counterpart? You just stated publicly that he, you know, he was out of the office due to medical reasons and with complications and back in for some additional things, that's what you stated. So then to say, well, he's just kind of not showing up, well, you know, I mean, come on. The other thing, which both, hold on, no, 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 no.
If you're going to make that statement, he didn't have his operation until March. So I haven't seen, I'm seeing him the first three, the first three months, I saw him one time.
The other thing, the other thing.
So he's collecting a paycheck, and I don't know what, I don't know what, what he's doing to get that paycheck, but he's collecting it.
And the other thing is, this body doesn't set your salary.
Well, you're part of it.
Yeah, you came to, and when you guys put in for the full, we said, well, let it go through the process. And went to the Board of Finance with your request of a full, full year salary. That's, that's right? So it goes through the process, this board doesn't set it. Secondly, but you know what, the appropriating bodies also did provide for you and the, the both registers, an additional position within that registrar of voters with the last, you created a deputy registrar of voters. So you each have an appointed, a deputy registrar that, that is appointed. Has any of this discussion taken place? I asked you to perform what the impact is, you just said that you don't set your salary. The appropriating bodies, there, there's no reason why you can't then do this analysis in terms of what it, what the impact is. I'm not talking about, both registers may need to sign off on a polling location, things like that. But in terms of assessing what the impact is going to be by reading the statute and what you feel you need. And again, I ask that you, have you reached out to the registrar, your counterpart, to have this discussion and analysis? But I ask you to bring that, I believe, Selectmen, did you have something to say?
No, I, I, I understand your frustration, I really do, and I'm so sorry. But I have no explanation, other than my thought was, you said you didn't, you are not able to speak with your counterpart prior to his surgery. Maybe he was really having such difficulties, health issues, and he just couldn't. But have you reached out just to personally talked to him or his deputy to say, you know, guys, we got to get together?
I talked to his deputy routinely, his deputy, I asked him if.
You get any answer?
Have you talked to, have you talked to Howie lately, and he said no?
I have contact information that I can give you so you can call him.
Yeah.
I, I do send him information.
We want to make it easy for you.
Information, and I, and I exchange information on stuff that has to do with the office. But it's very hard to be doing that on a, via emails and via, you know, discussions that are five seconds on the phone.
So you have had.
I've had contact with him.
So you have had contact, okay.
Well, I say.
Sir, did you have something? Okay. Thank you.
So.
All right, so you have, okay. Is that up?
I guess so.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
All right.
Motion to.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.